The order, the January thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen special workshop meeting. Can we have a roll call, please?
Rick Pavanano.
Here.
Julia Beckman.
Here.
Deb Boyle.
Here.
Mike Davenport.
Here.
I'm also here.
Here.
Okay, let's go on, let's do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up, we have student perspectives from the South High School marching band. They're gonna let us know how the Sugar Bowl went, how their performance in their trip.
Well, thank you. This evening, we have three students who are here to talk about their experience. This past December, Craig Rosely and Greg Hensel, two of our band directors, took a group of students to perform halftime ceremonies. They had additional recognition that they'll be able to talk to you about, this has been posted on our website, since it occurred, not due to information just before New Year's, and posted it for them. So, we thought we'd give you an opportunity to hear from student perspective about their experience in New Orleans.
It's okay, we promise we won't fight.
Hi, I'm Samantha Cho, I'm a junior and a drum major at Downers Grove South for the Marching Mustangs.
I'm Andrew, I'm also a junior and one of the drum majors for the marching band.
I'm Sarah Valiardo, and I'm the junior color guard captain for the Marching Mustangs.
So, on day one of our trip, we started off by taking a sixteen-hour bus ride.
Great, that's fun.
Fun.
It's pretty fun, I mean, despite certain sleeping arrangements, but... So, our first day, we pulled into New Orleans, and we are really excited, and we wanted to get off the bus, of course. So, our first stop was the aquarium, and it was really cool down there. I've never been to an aquarium, so it was cool for me. They had a lot of different fish and different... They had stuff from like the swamp, so we don't really see that stuff in Chicago here at the Shed Aquarium, so that was interesting. They had a lot of... They had an albino alligator, that was cool, I've never seen that.
Wow, that's neat.
That was our first experience in New Orleans. They had a lot of different wildlife that we've never seen, stuff from the swamp, stuff from down there that was native to New Orleans, it was cool. Our next stop that we went to, we drove maybe like an hour, two hours, to a swamp tour. So, we got on the boat, and we start going down the swamp, which is really cool. It's really peaceful and quiet, and there's a lot of vegetation, which our tour guide explained to us that the vegetation there is special. Certain moss grow there that are only native in areas that aren't highly polluted, which was interesting. He talked a lot about different vegetation there, like the trees. He also mentioned the hurricane down there and how that affected them. He also talked about the Cajun culture. I think all the boats got to experience holding a four-year-old alligator, that was really cool. I was freaking out a little bit. It was four years old, it was only like maybe this big, fourteen inches maybe. It was really cool, though. He tells a lot of stories culturally, mentioned a lot of like that area. In that swamp, there was a cemetery there that was part of their history, and a special person, Julie Baker... That was her name, right? Yeah, she was a storyteller there, and a lot of the kids from our school recognized that from Princess and the Frog, because they make a reference to Mama Odie. So, everyone was freaking out, they're like, "Oh, my gosh, we're in the swamp, Mama Odie, Disney." So, that was really... That was cool. That night, we went back to the hotel, we freshened up. It's been a while since we freshened up, because we're on the bus for a while. That was nice, showering. And then we went to Mulattie's Restaurant, and it was cool, because that was our first real taste of the food they had down there, because at the aquarium, they had just normal concession food, like pizza and nachos. So, that was our first taste of New Orleans food and stuff like that. They had like jambalaya and bread pudding, and we had a lot of bread pudding down there. They had a live band there playing Cajun music, which is really cool. And we all got to dance and hang out together and spend a really nice night there.
On day two of our trip, we actually had a competition that morning. So, it was a very nice early wake-up call to get on the buses to go out to West Jefferson High School. And we had rehearsal first, like we had like, we got to run through the show, and after we did that, we got dressed right on the bus, and then we immediately went to the competition that day. So, we had warm-up in the parking lot, like normal, and everything felt pretty like the same, just like at home, and that was really comforting, because performing like our show for like the last time ever was probably one of the most like... It was pretty emotional, like although we like had fun, so it wasn't like all mushy-gushy. So, we actually went out and did our show, and it was probably... It was really strong, despite the fact that we had a few bitten members missing. We actually had a really great like performance, I would say. I think we had more like our crowd appeal that we were proud of, especially with the jazz show down in New Orleans. It was really great. And unfortunately, we didn't get the satisfaction of finding out how we placed right after we performed. So, we packed up the buses, and we were able to go down to the French Quarter, one of the most like famous places down in New Orleans. I thought that like being on the waterfront was probably my favorite part, because it was like, it's so pretty, and despite the fact that like you have all the boats like going there, you know that like right out there is the Gulf of Mexico, and it's like... And it seems so like free down there. Down in the French Quarter, we were able to go down to a place like Central Grocery, and we had a muffelada sandwich, some of us. I don't know, it was an acquired taste. Yeah, but it was... I enjoyed seeing everything new down there. I never like... I know that all of us probably never missed an opportunity to try something new, because I... It was my first time going down to New Orleans, and I think it was a lot for a lot of people, too. Then, after we were able to go to the French Quarter, and we spent time on like walking around, seeing everything, which was really cool, because it's a completely different culture down there. You get to see people like being like friendly to you on the streets, like there's like music down there, and I know that sometimes you can see like street players, like when you go to like downtown Downers Grove or something like that. But it was so cool to see people like really invested in like what they were playing. Like there were gazebos where we all got to play music. That was... It was just really nice to be down in the French Quarter, because it was like walking around like a really homey town. Like everybody seemed to know everybody, even though it was one of the busiest like small places I've ever been to. That night, we actually got to go to our New Year's Eve party. That was... I know all the girls were looking forward to it, because we all got to dress up and look nice. We... So, we started the night off, and it was like mingling and dancing and, you know, all like the normal food. There was... There was like, there was new stuff that we got to try down there, like as well, like not just bread pudding. So, as soon as the awards started, I know that everybody was pretty like on edge, because, you know, we like wanted to be able to like come home with like something, like because we went down there for a reason, and we wanted to like make it special. So, as soon as we like, we like heard our name getting called for one award after another after another, and I was so excited, I was... I don't normally, as a color guard captain, get to go up and receive awards, but we were getting so many trophies that... We were just having like some of the best representations, not only your drum majors, but I was personally excited to get to go up and hold my very own like auxiliary, best auxiliary trophy. We won different things like our best music caption, best general effect, best visual. And then, overall, we won grand champion of the competition. And I don't know, we haven't had a grand champion in a long time, so I thought that was really nice. Then, we were found out that with the recognition of grand champion, we were awarded with being able to go and hold the flag out on the field, which was completely surreal. I don't think... I didn't know that that was like something that was going to happen, and I was really excited to like find out that our band like being like so great and so dedicated, that we were able to find like a way that we got to like show ourselves to like not just people who come to marching competitions, but somebody like who just is watching a college football game. Yeah, and then we got to end the night and celebrating New Year's on a bus, on the way home. And it's not the most normal New Year's party, but I... Getting to spend it with my marching band was better than I could have expected.
Day three, our final day in New Orleans, was another fairly early wake-up call, if I remember. We had to get up and go to the stadium to have rehearsal, to practice being on field with every other band that came down to play and practice in the field, and practice getting on and off the field. And as soon as we walked in there, we looked up, and we saw the giant Mercedes-Benz circle logo hanging, and it's... It looks way taller than you think on TV. It's gigantic. It went fairly well, everybody from all the bands listened well and rehearsed well, and we got a lot done during that rehearsal. And then afterwards, we had to stay for practice to help, or to practice getting the flag on and off the field and opening it up. So, that went very well. It was exciting. The first time we opened up the flag, you could just see everybody's faces were just shocked with how big it was, just looking from like the thirty to the thirty, I think it is. Just giant. And then, we finished up with that, and then we went to one of the malls down, or no, before that, we went on a... We had a step-on tour guide, jump onto our buses, and we toured New Orleans. We looked at different houses, different famous houses from famous people living there. We looked at a cemetery, which was very interesting, the style that the French used to bury their people. They used all above-ground tombs. And it was really interesting seeing all the names and the different... The priest burials and everything. It was very interesting. And then after that, we went to one of the malls down there, and they had Café du Monde, which is famous for beignets. So, that was very good. We got... With the trip, we got a coupon for a free beignet and a coffee or hot chocolate or drink of your choice. So, we... Pretty much everybody got the beignets, and you don't really think how much powdered sugar is on them until you get... Like the ground is with snow. I had to scrape some off before I took my first bite. Afterwards, we got ready to go to the actual performance, and we got dressed after lunch. We got into our uniforms, and then we rode the buses down to the stadium. And we lined up, or we found our seats first, because our bus drivers had to take a break, because they can't drive so many hours in a row without getting a break. So, we sat in the stands for maybe an hour, and then we went down, lined up, and grabbed the flag and pulled it out into the stadium. And that was a really awesome experience. We're sitting there, looking into the crowd, and you just see like hundreds of thousands of people sitting in the stadium, and then you see all the open space above you, it's just... It's amazing. And to think that our band from just Downers Grove got to go into the Sugar Bowl and hold the flag is just amazing. And then we folded up the flag and brought it back in. We sat through the game until halftime, and then we lined up in our spots to get ready to go onto the field with every other band. And that was very fun, being able to play in the Superdome, not the Superdome, but yeah. Just the first hit of the drums, you just hear the whole echo in the stadium, and everybody's just so excited to hear the music. It's phenomenal, just how excited everybody in the stadium is to hear old music, just normal plain old music being played, from high school bands, not even the university's bands. It's just great. And then we watched the game. It ended with a big surprise of Oklahoma winning. Big shock to most of the stands that left right away. And after that, we changed out of uniform, and then we hopped on the buses and rode back home, another long bus ride. We left really late, it was basically lights-out right after we got on the bus and got on the road. And then slept, and then rode the buses all the way back home.
So... I think for all of the band members, like one of the most memorable nights was, was it the day after New Year's?
I think, yeah.
The day after New Year's, we went on a steamboat called the Nachos, and that was really cool, because we got to go on the water, and they took us out for a while. The food was really good, and we dressed up again, and you know, girls just love dressing up. But that was really fun. They had a jazz band there, and they were phenomenal. Like Mr. Rosely's face like just lit up. That's when you know they're good. But they were so good, like I don't even have words, but it was really cool. Everyone really enjoyed it. And afterwards, there is a dance party, too, that we went to, and all the other bands also got to go to that, but none of them did for some reason, so it was just Downers Grove South. But they were also having like this celebration for the Sugar Bowl, and Imagine Dragons was playing for free, like a free concert, and we all wanted to go, so we got to go for like an hour or so, and we just hung out, watched them, and went back to the dance eventually. And yeah, that was that night. And next day, so walking in to the Superdome, it was like everyone said, it's just awesome. Like you wouldn't think that it was that cool, because on TV, everything just looks like, oh, it's like seats and a field. You know, I'm not into football, so I'm a girl, and I'm just like, field, we have one over there. But I mean, it's awesome, like it's like rows and rows and seats, and then more rows and rows of seats. So, it's really cool. We were... We got to sit in the nosebleed seats, so high up, but it was really cool. Cool experience. Everyone got like a little like take-home bag with like little binoculars and a little sign that says mayhem on it, you know, for the all-state sponsors. So, that was cool, little souvenirs, and just being in the scene... Oh, okay. Walking to our seats. We're in the nosebleed seat, so it's like we're all the way up here, the field's all the way down here. So, it's just like ramp after ramp after ramp, and it's just a giant circle, but I mean, exercise, you know? But yeah, it's breathtaking, because it's so big, and you don't think it's that big, but you're surrounded with people, and the atmosphere is just like, everyone's so energetic as sports, and everyone's cheering and screaming, and you can just feel the energy everywhere. And like the food there was really cool, too. It's not... It's concession food, just like nachos and pizza and hot dogs, but they also had like alligator, too. So, I mean, some people tried that. Andrew, you tried it, right?
Yeah. When we went to the French Quarter, I went to a different restaurant than the grocery, but I had alligator sausage, and that's a very good food. You can't eat alligator not in a sausage, because it's too tough to eat, but the flavor of alligator is really good. It's different.
It tastes like chicken.
It's kind of like that, just a little bit. Alligator is a very good food.
Yeah, I just appreciate like being there, and I know that the special experience with the color guard was we got to sit on the field, like during the second quarter of the game. And I know that Samantha said she wasn't like into like sports or anything, but I definitely love Oklahoma. That like, that's like one of my family's universities, and so I was so excited to be down there, and I was really energetic and excited. And then the color guard, while the band was tuning in the tunnel, we got to line up, actually, sit on the field, and I don't think I could have like... I didn't know field seats were involved, I like, I would have gone twofold, it was so exciting. And like I got to sit like right behind the Oklahoma bench, and I'm like sitting there like watching them like sit and like make plays, and like sit and like, I could like see like the ball on the field every so often when like the players are standing in front of me, and I think all the color guard girls were really scared sometimes when I would like freak out about like a play or like a football like, or how like, or like maybe an interception with Alabama. But yeah, in the end, I was very happy with the game.
So, yeah, that's our trip.
Thank you. Does anybody want to say anything? Yeah. Would anybody like to comment?
Well, I was a little disappointed that we didn't get to see much of them on national TV.
Except for the...
The very beginning, yeah, yeah. But I would have liked to have seen you guys at halftime, but...
It's a football...
Yeah, I know. They had to talk about the game.
Is there a YouTube version anywhere?
Is it on YouTube or any... Anything?
I think there are some fan-made videos you can find on YouTube.
Okay. It's on YouTube? Okay. I'll look for that, because that's, you know, I wanted to see that part.
We're also getting a season, a trick DVD, so we can...
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'd like to see that, because I was excited that you guys got to do that and that you won. I mean, that was really fabulous.
That's very cool.
Julia?
I have a question. Did our two band people get to jam with the... With any of the bands you heard play, any of the jazz bands?
None on the boat, unfortunately. They were a Grammy Award-winning jazz group.
Well, you could fit in.
I'm almost there.
Next time, next time.
Well, it's great to see all that hard work pay off. Congratulations very much.
I like to say we're just how very, very proud we are of all of you, and how appreciative we are of our staff and all your hard work, and certainly, the time on the bus, I'm sure, was not exciting for you either, so...
You might have all-star horseshit.
Okay.
It was an educational bus ride.
How many buses were there, three?
Three.
Thank you so much. The fourth world of trophies, right?
Yeah, I was gonna say, and all of the instruments. It was wonderful that you were able to appreciate the culture and experience those things that might be a once-in-a-lifetime trip for some of you, you never know, right? But it's really, it's great. Not only did you represent us well, but you got to experience even something outside of just, you know, just the band, even just the culture and everything there, so kudos, kudos to everyone. Thank you.
Yeah, nice job, thank you. All right, Nancy?
My apologies for being late. We're gonna move on to staffing.
Okay, Mr. Dice?
Sure. This is the time of year where we start having the conversations about the FTE projections for next year, what the enrollment looks like, et cetera. So, I tried to capture for you a little bit in the first paragraph of our report here, some of the kind of history about where we are with the CASADA projections. We had these redone in two thousand and eleven, when we saw that the enrollments that we were seeing were not matching up the data that we had from CASADA. Dr. John CASADA of University of North Carolina is used by a lot of school districts around the country. We generally follow the CASADA B projections, which means that's what he's anticipating our actual enrollment to be, as he factors in new housing, the turnover in existing housing, and family immigration. CASADA A is when all those numbers are less than anticipated, and then CASADA C is when all the numbers are greater than what's anticipated. So, to give you an idea in terms of what kind of range we're talking about, I didn't put that in this report, but I just thought maybe you'd be interested in knowing. If we were to look at the CASADA A projections for the district, we would be looking at four thousand six hundred and eighty-one students for next year, which is slightly less than four hundred below the CASADA B. And then CASADA D would be five thousand four hundred and forty-four, which is four hundred slightly, close to four hundred more than what we're projecting our enrollment to be. And with four hundred being a pretty large number, when you start calculating what FTE numbers will be. So, if we follow the CASADA B, and we use the ratio that we've used the last few years of twenty-one point eight to one, our actual FTE enrollment on the enrollment side of things will be down slightly from the current school year, the thirteen-fourteen school year compared to the fourteen-fifteen. One of the things that we've done the last couple of years is we've taken the CASADA numbers and then looked at what our actual numbers are, meaning with our incoming freshmen, that we already know what those numbers are looking like, and our current freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, we've said, all right, what do we have in our buildings? Right now, we're slightly less than one percent below where CASADA believes we will be if we follow the CASADA B, which is good for us, because generally speaking, we gain transfer students in the summer, which will probably put us actually really close to being...
Right on.
...on the number when we start in the fall. So, then I tried to give you kind of the last seven years of where we've been as a district, not only in the student-teacher ratio, but the enrollment numbers, and then the instructional FTE, so that you can see for fourteen-fifteen. If we follow the twenty-one point eight to one, we will have a two-point-six FTE decrease from where we are in the thirteen-fourteen school year. And then lastly, what I wanted to reference for you there was the last two years, what we have done is taken the enrollment from the fifth day of second semester at the two campuses, and said, okay, how does this compare to what CASADA thought? And we've adjusted the FTE up and down from the district pot without increasing those numbers, so that one, when we add them together, we'll still end up at the two-thirty-three point four. It may just not be broken out exactly the way he was projecting it to be, because we think what we currently have in our system is a better gauge of dispensing the FTE than going solely by his projections.
Sure.
And that's worked pretty well for us the last two years, so we were gonna continue to do that again this year. Any questions that you have for me?
I have one question. Just noticed that quite a difference in, a decrease in students itself as a projection. Any... Is there any particular reason why? I'm sure it's housing or something.
You know, I really... I really don't know which of those three factors would be the most likely to contribute to that difference. It's the last couple of years, we have been slightly below our enrollment at South compared to what he was projecting, and slightly above at North compared to what he was projecting, but the overall district has been really close to what he had projected it.
Thanks.
One of the purposes in presenting the information tonight is to get the board's task at approval, not a formal vote, the task at approval to use a staffing ratio. The earlier we can get this information to the principals and associate principals, the more time they have to work with the department heads sectioning the building appropriately. And so, this year, we... Last year, we weren't able to get the information to the board as quickly as we have this year. We're hoping that the board can at least, can tell us tonight whether they can support this in... In principle or not. It would be within all the budget proj... This is the figure we've used for budget projections for the next year and the five-year projection.
I think the only question I would have is, have you had any preliminary consultations with the teachers' union as far as... I know that there are some initiatives and programs that we have talked about as a board and as a district, and how that fits into that plan and program.
I don't think we've talked to the teachers' association, Pete. There are certainly some programs and initiatives coming up that we're gonna bring forward to the board that will account for additions in staffing. This is primarily, as you and Rick can understand, being, you as a department head, Rick as a teacher, this is primarily how we do the general staffing in the building. There is something else called, what we call, lack of better terminology, below-the-line. Pete can talk more about that, but it's, you know, those are some of the initiative-type things. But we generally... Because this is pretty consistent with what we've done in the past, and it's not gonna result in a big change in terms of staffing and positions, probably wouldn't consult with the... Typically, we would consult with the association on this figure.
And to piggyback off of Marcus talking about, Gina's spent a lot of time working with the math department chairs and the Association of Principals for Curriculum and Instruction. One of the areas that we'll be looking at in terms of supportive programs, like Keith talked about, will be Math II, Math II S, as we continue on with Common Core. So, they're looking at the math coaching, they're looking at the Math I assist, and then the number of Math II S sections that we may need. So, I would anticipate at the March twelfth board meeting, that we'll have some requests for the below-the-line... that we'll have some requests for the below the line FTE that Mark referenced to be supportive of the students as we move into year two of the Common Core math. We don't have the exact number for you this evening. That's still something that they're working on. Like I said, Gina's had multiple meetings with various people as we try to look at what's worked well this year with the Math I, have the department chairs kind of prioritize where they would place FTE if we were able to give that to them below the line and make that part of the March recommendation.
Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns?
Sounds good to me.
Yep.
Sounds like, is he allowed a head shaking, yes?
Yes.
Sounds like that's an approval to me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next, next agenda item is an annual report about the past year's summer school and recommendations for the 2014 summer school. Mr. Tilton is dean of students at North High and he has been our summer school director, administrator, past several years. And he's going to present this report with support from Mrs. Accardi. Tilton?
Thank you. Thank you for your time tonight. I'm happy to once again, fortunately, we had a successful summer school program in 2013. At this time, I'll give the best bullet points of the program. Summer school this year was held at North Campus with the exception of two days, which we had to move over to South due to a prolonged power outage, actually. A large thanks to Ed Schwartz and CMV crew and the technology department to, in less than 24 hours, get the building ready to host summer school over for, for the next two days until things got sorted out. The summer school was again the normal six week, split into two, three week semesters. Class runs from eight in the morning till 12:45. So, my, my next points will be separated into kind of the three sections that is in the summer school report. The, one, the academic program, two, the driver's ed program, and three, the online credit recovery program. So, with the academic program, we saw 330 students participated this year, which is a marked difference from, from last year. Sort of a 14% decrease, but still a healthy number. We had 13 different subjects represented. And we actually, speaking of something new though, we had a pilot program that we were happy to introduce through a lot of hard work. The science department, they put together a pilot AP chemistry prep class, which was consistent for the six weeks. It met, it was predominantly online, but it met once a week for a lab experience. And it was targeted to students who were challenging themselves for maybe the first time in an AP class, but in particular the AP tech class. And it coached them up on the rigors and the ins and outs of, of say, AP camp. Nine students participated. They received very positive results and we have plans to offer it again next year. With our driver's ed program, we had 59 students, another healthy number, up from 51 last year. We had much better retention of students who started to begin with. And once again, we were able to fit, fit in the administering of the state behind the wheel waiver test for 10 students qualifying. And then the third part, our online credit recovery program, continued to offer the flexibility of two different sessions throughout the day. A morning and an afternoon session. 50 students participated in that and completed 64 different credits in different classes in that class, in that program. So, once again, it was a great combined effort from every department in the district. In a moment, Gina Secardi will talk about the, summarize our recommendations for our next year's summer school program. But before that, are there any questions that I can answer?
Just one, I know you indicated, and your numbers indicate that the numbers are down somewhat. Do you have any reasoning in terms of, is it because they're doing so much better during the year? They don't need that recovery help or?
Right. Well, you know, it's hard to say from year to year, but there are some numbers and trends that are showing in our, our regular school year performance for the last two years that have shown a definite decrease in the number of Fs that students have, you know, have earned. You know, just from last year, or sorry, from, in, in year 2013, there were 390 less Fs earned from the prior year. And in 2012, there were 96 less.
Oh, my goodness.
You know, from, from the year before. So, you know, students that are taking a summer school class may not have just failed that class the year prior, could have been, you know, a couple of years before that, but they need to complete it before they get to graduation. And so, you know, 450 or so less classes that need to be recovered could make, could make a big difference. You know, I think we also see maybe a few less students in overall in the school population or the district population. That can add to it too. There's several factors. Also, it just could be a year where students decided, summer school's not gonna fit in in my schedule. You know, so, there'll be several things.
Thank you, thank you.
I had a question. I noticed from your survey that it seemed like the majority, 75% of the students were taking it for repeat. Do you also offer, or is there a, a group or maybe a target audience that could maybe take it to get ahead? Like maybe a eighth grader could take freshman biology to get one year ahead in science to open up maybe an AP scenario? Or is it, I noticed like it was heavy on the repeatability. You know, you've maybe had a bad semester, a bad year. But is there an audience out there that you could maybe market a class like that where they could pick up a year or in, in a certain core?
Right. Well, there, there are some subject areas where that, that's a little bit more popular, a little more possible. For instance, some students will be taking Geometry 300. Now, these are mostly soph, are going to be sophomores that want to jump up into a higher level math. They did well freshman year, improved it, and said, you know what? I think, I think I'm ready for a higher, which I think would be advanced algebra trig. And so, in order to do that though, you need to pass through geometry first. So, we, we have some of our, our current students, maybe not so many of the incoming eighth graders, but we do see some students taking Geometry 300 in order to jump ahead to a higher math level. But as far as the science, we haven't explored that. Most of our core classes, the, the stipulations to take the class are to, because you've already attempted it once in the regular, regular full year's program. But, you know, I suppose there's probably a few unique situations where students will take classes to get ahead like that.
I just wondering if anybody sat down and wondered if there was a target? Just to get, you'd have a, a group of students coming through the system then that would open up a little bit more flexibility in their schedule? Maybe for some of the higher end classes that they do offer?
You know, I mean, if we were to start to see a trend like that, or a new target market forming, I'm, I'm pretty sure that summer school would like to look at becoming flexible like that to try and see if we can, we've done that with, by adding, you know, new classes. Last, two years ago, we offered two new classes because we saw a need of students that were taking the online credit recovery course and subjects where they, they could have taken, if we had created a summer school class for it. We were able to do that pretty quick, within less, you know, about a year to do that. So, it's possible we could do that for science.
Or on the opposite end, is there any, is there a class offered to maybe, where if you had eighth grade students coming in who maybe were a little bit deficient in maybe some of the math skills or some of the science skills, have like a bridge, a bridge class to kind of bring them back up to speed so that when they do take those science classes or them at their, they can make up some of those deficiencies that they may have coming out of the eighth grade, out of the grade school system?
I think we've tried to do a little bit of that in the past, Rick.
Okay.
Haven't had a lot of support in terms of kids enrolling, but we have tried to do that in the past.
If, if I may add, we are working with the math department, particularly Math I, to provide opportunities, not just for students who received an F, of course, but for students who may have received a D or even a C, but do not feel that they have a solid foundation to move on to Math II. So, I meet monthly with the math department chairs and we are talking about that for next year and how we would structure that to help students to be able to continue ahead, even if they pass, but they just don't feel they have that strong foundation.
Yeah, because I think what you're gonna see is that, this first batch of kids coming out in eighth grade, they were all, in seventh grade, they were all put in to the same level. And then they tried to separate and track them out. And I, I, I don't know how successful that was for every student that was put in maybe those different tracks. And I just was wondering if there is something, somebody has looked at, maybe just one class to pick up maybe 15 or 20 students that then could maybe come up or spread out or, that's all I was. Because I think you're gonna see a little bit of a ripple from that eighth grade class, a little bit.
And we've even talked about it in terms of if students are our Math I students, so current freshmen, but don't have that strong base or field they have, that if the numbers allow us to, we would segregate them so we know what experience they had here. And then if we could do the same with students coming from, from the eighth grade.
Okay.
So, we've thought about it in terms of multiple levels. We also have on a little bit of a different note, and I'll talk about that with the recommendations. We do have a summer bridge program for students who explore scores, lead us to believe that they might need some strategies and some assistance. And we offer that in both reading and math.
Oh, good.
And we are planning, that's one of the recommendations, is to continue to fund that program. We also have a process for enrichment classes. So, one of the enrichment classes Tim spoke about was the AP chemistry, summer bridge, if you will. Not to be confused with the other summer bridge, but the AP. That was our first time and it was successful. I've seen the data, I've met with the department chairs, but we really wanna promote it. In fact, we're already getting the news out last week and informing families before students start to register for classes. And we have other enrichment courses as well, and as I said, a process for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, other recommendations in terms of summer school for 2014. The first one, of course, is to continue the summer bridge program. We do track how those students who participate in our summer bridge program do freshman year in terms of grades. The data is compelling. We would like to continue to fund that program through the use of Title I. We have, by the way, last year, our math teacher already made changes based upon the Common Core. So, we don't have substantial changes going in to our summer bridge math program this year. Those changes were made a year ago.
Okay.
So, I feel like we're in pretty good shape there and we should continue that program. We'd also like to continue using grant monies, Title I specifically, for our free and reduced lunch students, those students who receive fee waivers during the regular school year. So, if they were receiving a fee waiver this year, they would continue to receive one in the summer should they attend summer school. We would also like to maintain for the fifth year, this would be the fifth year, the tuition rate, we'd like to keep it the same at $195 per semester. We do not wanna discourage families from signing up. We feel that while this report only looks at salary and other personnel costs, it doesn't look at some fixed costs, wear and tear to the building and utilities and whatnot. In terms of these costs, it is supporting itself. So, we would like to continue. We do, we are not asking for any type of an increase and the same goes for salary. We'd like to continue, this would be the third year that, the same salary for our teachers. We'd like to continue to use Title I funds to support transportation and other costs that there might be for free and reduced lunch students. And we would like to eliminate the back on track program. Back on track program was a math program for students who passed first semester but failed second semester algebra typically. We feel with the changes in Common Core, that that program as it's designed will not be as effective. Much of what was covered in second semester is now covered in first semester. And so, because the sequencing of Math I is very different and it's not just algebra, obviously, we do not feel that program should continue at this point. We will look in the future at other ways to assist students, but right now, we're focusing on offering the Math I and looking at ways to support those students in those courses and not just for students who fail, as I said earlier. And then we have a proposed calendar for summer school, which of course takes into consideration the July 4th holiday and will not affect us now that we've had the two snow days. Any questions that you might have about those recommendations?
Seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm glad you're keeping the costs down.
I think that's important.
Joint board member training?
Yes, Dr. Cuppa, there are several board members have requested that we plan an in-house training program to offer the required trainings to our school board members and perhaps board members from other school districts. We haven't done much in the way of planning that and, and I did want to have a discussion with the board before we spent more time or invested more time in it. The three issues, as I, I pointed out to the board, are these. One, as the board is aware, it's difficult to find Saturdays in times when the, that are not on the current board calendar that, that everyone can be in attendance. Because you all have very busy lives and you already spend time several nights a month on this job. And so, that's always been a challenge. It's not insurmountable, but a challenge. And obviously, concerned about inviting more people and making, trying to find a date that works for everyone is a larger challenge. But again, not insurmountable. The second issue is that, of course, not every board member has to take the training. Some people have already taken the training. So, it's not necessarily a, an opportunity that everyone would be together. It's an opportunity to provide the training for the people who need it. And all that, certainly that people who have, will be elected in 2015 will need the training, but they don't need it yet. So, that, that would be an option for them to take it or not take it. Then finally, it's my understanding from, you know, my own research, Joanne's done some research too, is that most of this, or all of it can be done online. And if that is the case, well, that's not my favorite form of training. You know, that's, it's, it's possible for us to arrange that as opposed to paying for people to come in and do the training. But I just want everyone to realize that that is a possibility. And the, the good part of online training is you can do it at your own convenience at your home without scheduling an event. So, we will be glad to move forward with the planning for this, but did want to make sure that the board was aware of, of the different caveats and wanted us to go ahead with it anyway.
Thank you, Mark.
What kind of costs are involved?
The only cost I think would be if we had to pay the presenters. I presume we would have to pay the presenters. I don't know how much. Mr. Stelan, I, I don't wanna put you on the spot. I know you're a presenter. Do you get paid for this?
It was volunteer for ISB. There was an attorney, I believe her time was, but it's, it's three hours of legal side, different issues that they cover and that, and only one hour of the financial. You know, my, I just went through it yesterday or did it, presented yesterday. It's, it's very basic. I mean, so a seasoned board member probably would skate right through this. So, the required elements are very basic.
But there would be additional costs because we would have to provide our staff to arrange it.
If they arranged it through ISB, perhaps they would set it up. I know they have some in this area that they had scheduled. There was one in Naperville. Mine was in Julia.
There's one on November 8th in Naperville.
In Naperville?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. It's on a Saturday and it's from, I just pulled it up because I, I was gonna talk about it later. It's 8:30 to 3:00.
Don't we have to have it before then though? Did you say November?
November. Oh, I'm sorry, was I talking, February, I'm sorry, February 8th. What did I say? What did I say?
November.
Oh, yeah. That was done. Yeah. February 8th is, is, is when it's gonna be offered in Naperville.
Well, I think that, that my thought was is that in the spring, we always try to do something with our feeder districts. And I, I was under the assumption that they weren't real keen on doing a dinner, you know, and presentation anymore. Maybe, you know, it wasn't as enticing or whatever as it has been in the past. And so, my thought was is I think that, you know, a lot of people need this. Half the boards of all of the districts. And it doesn't hurt to have other people, you know, the ones that are gonna be elected maybe in the coming months, do it too. And maybe do that as a service and a get together. as a service and a get together for them, and then it's a win-win for everybody.
How many people are we thinking will need it? Did you say half of each board?
Isn't it? Half of everybody?
Anybody who hasn't had it will need it eventually if they stay on the board.
Right, right. So I mean, it...
Is there any other subject that would be, you know, a compelling reason to bring people together, like common core? If they can, if they can get the training elsewhere and probably have, is there anything that we could offer that would kind of bring our feeding, our feeder, not feeding, feeder districts in and be a good learning experience and maybe just take an hour or so, so that we could have both education and some social networking go there? For board members as well as staff?
Well, we've had, we've had the spring get together before, 58th hosted it. That was the last one, and we had some, some nice presentations, then I, I mean, I, I would think you could, could do something along those lines again, couple it all together.
I don't, I don't recall why we did not do that last spring.
What, didn't we get snowed out?
Could have been the weather.
Yeah. It was, it was a weather event, I believe, is why it was canceled last year.
That could be.
If you didn't want to do it under the training, could you, is there a possible just, or a dinner? It just might, like you said, for an hour or so, just to get everybody in the same room, just have a roundtable discussion if nothing else.
I think there are two different issues.
Yeah.
I don't want to project that I don't want to do the training. I want to project that before we plan this, I want to make sure everyone understands what we're doing and...
I have a feeling you're not going to have a good turnout. I think it, I got a feeling you're going to incur a cost and not get a lot of bang for it, I think, especially with February 8th being offered in Naperville. They've signed up.
And online.
And online.
In terms of having the, returning to the joint board dinner, that's certainly something we can do.
I do like the idea of getting everybody together.
Yeah, that's, I mean, you don't want to discourage that.
Superintendents do meet quarterly, and that's something we usually plan.
I don't know, I mean, the reason I asked about cost was to establish whether or not it was really an issue, or where, and it sounds like it's not much of an issue. As far as attendance goes, hard to say. I mean, your opinion, I don't know. I know of at least two members of the 68 board that would be interested in doing it, because there was an inquiry made to me. So maybe they're it, I don't, I don't know. But I thought it was an intriguing idea.
It was very disappointing at the, at the conference. You couldn't get, you couldn't get into any of the, of the presentations, and so that was pretty useless, I think.
I went to the one in June, and it was, they had it down at Tinley in the convention center, and it was probably 150 people, so...
Was it all day for you too?
It was all day, yeah.
That's what these ones are.
I was able to fulfill all the requirements.
Right. Because we need it by May, right? We need it by May.
April.
April.
April, was it April? Okay. And there's only, there's only probably a few of our board members who actually need it, right?
There's, what, I do.
Yeah, the three of you that got elected.
Three of the new ones that got elected this time.
The four.
And see, and we couldn't add any other, we don't know who's going to be elected, we need it before the next election.
That's right. We don't know. That's right.
So, you know, is, I, I think that the idea, I think Terri's idea was really great.
Yes.
I, I support the reason behind it, I think that the premise of it was great. I'm thinking just now in the timeframe of it now, though, and with one being offered right here in Naperville on, on the 8th, I'm thinking that that's probably...
I don't know. Do we know if it's full or not?
I just got it from IASB like two days ago, and I was going to ask Joanne after talking tonight.
I haven't seen it.
And then maybe she could make us reservations if we're, you know, free. I think that's what I'm going to do. I still like your idea. I think maybe we could collaborate and do something like a joint board thing. It would be wonderful to host something like that, but I don't think this would be now, knowing that most of the boards only have some of their members, because the members who don't need the training are not going to come to a joint boards if they're going to sit there and go through another training session.
Not for eight hours.
It'd have to be something else.
Not for eight hours, for sure.
Yeah.
I would suggest then that, that we, you go ahead and we look into, for, for the three of you, so you can get that handled, and then, and then separately, we keep on the table the idea of trying to put together some sort of event to bring us all together again like we used to.
Gives us more time, too.
But, but, you know, the year's going to be gone soon. At the right, we're going.
It's time to look ahead to April, May.
You know, we can't keep pushing it off into the parking lot for a long time, because it's going to be over.
Well, would it be a good, if we resurrected the idea of the superintendent's dinner and hosted it here, would that be a good compromise? Have a joint meeting and host it here?
Could I make a suggestion that maybe the presidents of the boards maybe talk to each other and...
Figure it out?
Yeah, because there's probably other ideas on other school boards, too.
See, maybe to do a little survey, what topic would be of interest to everybody?
And then you could report back to us.
Survey monkey.
Survey monkey, that's right.
We'll survey monkey. Any other discussion about this? Okay, reception of visitors, this is an opportunity for the audience members to address the board on any, on any topic pertaining to community, Community High School District 99?
I would like to remind everyone, pizza wars.
I'll buy my ticket.
This Thursday. Tickets, $10 now, $12 at the door. Great opportunity for you and your family to get together and have pizza and, and listen to the Rock, what is it, Rock?
Academy.
Rock Academy, I'm sorry.
Good, too.
And we've got three different groups performing, so it is a wonderful opportunity.
For anybody, I was going to, before we went into closed session, I was going to ask you to do a plug, but for anybody listening, why don't you just review what it's for and...
This is for the District 99 Education Foundation. We are sponsoring the Pizza Wars. We have eight different pizza restaurants in, in the district, going to be at South High, and you can taste them and vote for the best pizza and, or your favorite pizza. And the winner, or the most vote getter, will get a plaque to put up in their restaurant that says that they won the Pizza Wars.
How many pizza places are, are, eight? Eight total? Okay.
We have a lot of pizza.
Yeah. And so it's a wonderful opportunity for you and your family to bond with other families in District 99, so come and get your tickets. Oh, Thursday.
This Thursday.
This Thursday.
This Thursday. 5:30 to 8:00. At South High.
In the cafeteria, cafeteria. Come carb load with us. Okay, anything else? Do we have a motion to move in closed session for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing, testimony, and complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity? Moved?
I'd say moved.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I got to take a roll.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Mike Dimport?
Aye.
Keith Mutu?
Aye.
Jerkabicich?
Aye.
Nick Camenado?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Aye. So moved? We are concluded. Thank you.